So this is the June 27 meeting of the Northampton Zoning Board of Appeals. I am David Bloomberg here with me on the board are Elizabeth Silver, Sherry Taylor and Maureen Scanlon. And Nathan Chung from the North City of Northampton Office of Planning and Sustainability, providing staff support. We have three items on the agenda, but before we get to those, I do want to announce that this hearing is being video recorded. Also, when we get to the hearing items, we will ask anyone who wishes to speak to identify yourself by with name and address for the record that's being kept. And to address all comments to the board. And but we'll start each matter by hearing a brief summary by the applicant or the representative of the applicant of the permit or finding being requested, then the board members will have an opportunity to ask any questions that we have. And after that, members of the public who are present will have an opportunity to ask questions about the each application. Before we get to the first item on the agenda, we always open with an opportunity for public comment if there's anyone here from the public who wants to address the board about matters other than the three matters that are on the agenda for tonight. Is there anyone here who has any general comments for the board that other than relating to the three applications on the agenda? Are we seeing anyone, Nathan?
No, I believe it's Rachel is the applicant for five Fulton later today on Ailin also. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make you guys co-host just, you know, um, well, actually, I will just make not make those guys co-host until we're ready to start, but please raise your hand or type into chat if you have some concerns. But yeah, I don't see anybody. So again, if you anybody want to raise your hands, we're a general public comment, not on the agenda.
Right. Not seeing any, we'll proceed to the first item. It's past 5:30. So we'll first, and by the way, the third item on the agenda on Fulton Road, I have a conflict and I will recuse myself from that item. I'll be here for the first two. And then if the board wants, I can stick around because I think we have some votes and some minutes and we have to talk about some scheduling, summer scheduling matters. So I won't disappear. I will just recuse myself and not participate in the hearing on the third item of the agenda. The first item is a request for a special permit to update a non-conforming rear sign submitted by Mass Signs, the property at 971 Bridge Road, map ID 18D-70. This hearing was continued from the original scheduled date of June 13th due to a lack of a quorum for the board on June 13th. I will remind the members of the board that this special permit requires a super majority vote of three of three members. We have three members plus one alternate, and I believe Sherry's the alternate. Yes.
Yes.
So the three voting members will be Elizabeth, Maureen and me. And but we we welcome the input of of all members, regular and alternate members. And the publication of this hearing on this special permit was made on May 30th and June 6, 2024. So with that, I'll ask the applicant or the representative of the applicant to provide us with a brief overview of the the request that's being made for the special permit. And again, if people could identify themselves by name and address for the record, please.
Number one, thank you very much for hearing me out here this evening. My name is Adam Nixa from Mass Signs. 988 Southampton Road in Westfield on behalf of Goodwill. We are updating their signage on the property there as they're going through a little bit of a investment throughout their different locations. And this is the first one that they're hitting currently this year. And as it continues on, there'll be other locations next year. But this one in particular itself, as this one is explained after a detailed conversation with Nathan of being a rather unique property where this is what we're looking for is to place the channel letter sign, which I don't know if we have a sample of there or if I need to share a picture of what have you here of this in particular on the what's considered their front entrance of their building, but it's technically the rear of the property. So it's the where this one here as it is sits, the existing light box sign above the door is at a height of 155 inches from grade. So above the 10 foot requirement for a rear wall sign. To put it at 10 feet, you'd be right in the middle of the glass of the windows. So physical improbability of doing so at a 10 foot height. So we're looking for review and hopefully approval of this placement of this replacement sign to replace the older faded light box wall sign with this new updated channel letter sign for Goodwill.
And I'm wondering if it's possible, Nathan, to screen share. It might be helpful, especially I suppose for members of the public, if any.
Yes, I, I, Adam, I can share if you want, or I mean, I, yeah.
Yeah, if you can, because I'm not sure how to do that on my end here.
Yeah, so I'll just share it now. Okay. Um, I think these, so this one is the
So location wise to the rear of the building of where the existing, so this is technically their front entrance, even though it's facing the rear of their property. The rear of the building faces the front. It's a little backwards, a little unique on the actual building placement. So just for actual placement there, as you can see, the existing light box sign over the doorway here with the channel letter sign to the left of that matched to size in terms of square footage. So it's not any larger. It's actually same, actually just a little bit smaller under the a hair under the 25 square feet. How, you know, detailed you want to be with that, but to match in 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 overall 25 square footage there that the existing sign is. So nothing larger than that. Height wise, it's also justified to the bottom of the existing sign, light box sign. And given that this one is actually the new channel letter sign will be seven inches shorter than the existing. So it'll be overall height will be reduced by seven inches from the existing sign to the new sign.
And the old sign is a light box. Can you just remind us what the lighting will be for the new sign?
Given with the lighting requirements, they're all the existing sign is powered by high output fluorescent lamps. Whereas obviously with to meet the lighting requirements with this as well with the bylaws set forth, I am actually implementing an adjustable dimmable LED system in this particular LED set so that it can be dimmed to meet lighting requirements.
Is that dimming automatic?
No, annual.
Annual.
So it will be, so it will be set to, it can be done in increments of percentage from zero all the way up to 100 with a little your remote control. So it will be set. And that's what it will be set at to meet those brightness requirements.
So it doesn't require somebody to continually?
No, nope. It will be, it's basically set it and forget it.
To make sure it complies with the new dark skies.
Correct.
Yep. Any board members, any?
I don't remember reading about the hours of illumination in relation to the business hours, the open hours of the store.
I'm not sure in behalf of what their set hours are with the store itself. But otherwise there, I believe that they do have everything there on time clocks on the property that I can confirm. I don't have that 100% information upfront with me here. But otherwise there, if there was, you know, to meet with with regard to guidelines for illumination that they be off by, you know, operating hours or you know, if it's by, you know, 11pm or whatever the the actual set time is, you know, the recommendation will be followed to to meet those guidelines.
And I mean, if you want, Maureen and the rest of the board, I can quickly look it up. There's some, there's some discrepancy, but it basically one section is already when it says at the closing of business, the light the lighting needs to be turned off at the close of business. There's another section that says on hour after, but I think it's probably safer to assume the the more stricter one at the close of business. And actually, I'm direct, I mentioned it to the director and we are trying to clarify that.
Yeah, I, to save any further back and forth, I think we would want to give ourselves the opportunity to define that as part of what we choose to approve. And I think that our discrepancy, I recall situations where it came up where it had to do with giving the employees time, you know, especially in winter months when it's dark to go out to their cars. Still having some illumination. So I would, I think it's, it's important to clarify, Nathan, but I think there, I can remember there was a rationale for going for the hour beyond, and it may not apply to certain kinds of businesses, but perhaps to retail businesses.
Right. And let me just pop up the
The other thing I noticed that is a change that I don't think came up specifically tonight is, is that you're moving it right from over the doorway to centering it on that facade.
Ideally, we'd like to do that as aesthetically it looks more balanced that way. That is the request. Yes.
Yeah. So that's part of your application. So I think that's how we would consider this.
Okay. Yeah, agreed. Any other questions?
No, I just clarifying the standard that the sign would not detract from the character of the neighborhood and should be permitted in the public interest. Is that accurate?
I think that's correct. Right, Nathan?
Right. Uh huh. It's 7.2M. I'll just quickly give me one second. Sorry.
Other than that, I don't have any questions. Sounds like a good improvement to me.
Exactly. Well, Nathan's checking, they're, they're making it less tall, a little longer, but overall smaller. And it's going to be a more updated lighting.
Correct. More efficient, more everything's on the essentially the beautification of the of the building and architecture and updating of the the brand to be of, you know, more publicly appealing itself there, you know, even just as a comment of my own, you know, obviously sharing the parking lot with CVS that abuts the same property there, you know, having the same type of channel letters on their building as well too. So obviously it has carries a little bit of consistency with the commercial buildings within the existing neighborhood, so to speak.
Right. And it's, as you say, it's, it's facing a fairly large parking lot and
Correct.
Another commercial property. There is some housing to the, would that be north of it? But
The north of it, yes. But that's mostly there's blocked by a signal. I don't want to say significant, but it is blocked by a tree line there as well. So you know, certainly I'd have more concern of the parking lot lights than a channel letter sign on a building itself, but that's just me.
Oh, that makes sense. Yeah.
You know.
Um, any other questions from board members?
Nope.
And if not, are there any members of the public who wanted to address this application for this sign on the rear slash front of the Goodwill building facing CVS? Do we see anybody, Nathan, raising their hands?
Uh, no, but everybody here else are applicants for the next hearings. Yeah, but if you want to comment on it, please raise your hands or type in into chat saying, I have a comment and I can unmute you.
Yeah, don't see.
Yeah, I don't see any. And yeah, I can, I can read 7.2M or M language.
I think we're okay.
I think we're good. I think I believe Elizabeth captured the essence of the point. So the, there was a little discussion brought raised by Maureen about perhaps having a condition requiring the light to be switched off at close of business. We can perhaps incorporate that into a motion if
I feel uncomfortable with that. I think for the safety of the employees, you need an hour for them to get out of the building. That makes no sense to me.
Although there's other lighting in the parking lot, but I'm fine with my personally, I'm fine with an hour also.
And I think that's what we just did at the most or one of the more recent hearings.
An hour after. Okay. And then your question, Maureen?
No, I could say, I could say we might consider or to conform with with standards defined by the Department of Planning and Sustainability because
Yeah, I think
That's a little awkward because they haven't been defined yet, right?
Right. So I thought you were going to say conform with the the dark sky ordinance, which is true whether we say it or not, that requirement. But I'm feeling like that might be a little bit vague insofar as those standards haven't applied. I don't know if people feel otherwise. I suppose you could say, yes, as, as, as established from time to time, but that that feels kind of vague to me for, for
Why don't we just keep it simple and just say within an hour of close of business?
Okay. Okay. So I guess we would first, as long as we're comfortable that we don't need any more input from the applicant. There are no members of the public here for this one. We could entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We can have discussion after that, but we cannot hear any more input from the applicant. Do we have such a motion?
So moved.
Any second?
One second.
Okay. And since we're virtual, we have to have a roll call for each vote, including this one. So I'll ask Nathan to just to do a roll call.
Yes.
Most this is the vote on the motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah. Motion to close the public hearing by roll call. David?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Okay. So that's unanimous. A public hearing is closed, but don't go anywhere, anyone. We're continue with discussion. And if people feel they're ready, a motion on the request for the special permit.
I am very comfortable with this application as we're defining. I think it's an improvement and I think the placement is going to be an improvement. I think the new, the refresh of the sign is going to bring it up to date and make it a more appealing entrance. I would be ready to move forward with a vote.
Okay, sounds good. Do you want to craft a motion?
Oh, I could try. So I moved that we approve the request for a ZBA special permit to update a non-conforming rear sign by Mass Signs at 971 Bridge Road, map ID 18D-70. Continued from the original scheduled date of 6/13. The one condition I would attach to it is that we request, we require that the illumination be shut off within an hour of the closing hours of the store.
Okay.
Does that
Second, one second.
Yeah, I think so. Second, in just terms of discussion, I think we're all in agreement that this satisfies the standard required by 350-7.2M based on the discussions we've had. And I had one other thought, but can't be that important. So, okay. So I guess we, if we have a second, we can vote by roll call on the motion with that condition?
Yes. And before I, may I make a comment?
Please, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So the, the thing we're trying to clarify in the lighting ordinance section is 12.2 subsection far subsection C and E. One section says all business sign lights must be turned off at the close of business. The next section, E, literally like one section below says sign lighting and illuminated signs must be turned off one offer, one hour after the close of the business. So we are trying to clarify this, but you know, I understand the board once, it was requested that condition. So we can include that. But you know, in case the more stricter requirement for the line light to be turned off after close of business applies, once we get clarification, I think that stricter requirement would come into play.
Yeah, I think, in other words, I think we're all doing that with the understanding and the applicant should have the understanding that if a determination is made that that stricter standard applied applies, then notwithstanding what we said in our, in our decision under the other ordinance, the stricter standard would apply and the lights would have to be turned out at close of business. All right.
Understood.
It could make that explicit, but I don't think we need to. I remember the other comment I was going to make, and that is I see from the staff report that there were DPW had no comments on this, Nathan, and you didn't receive any other letters or correspondence or calls or emails on this from anyone else. Correct?
There was one call from somebody nearby, but there was a misunderstanding. This person thought something the front is going to be updated, but as soon as I explained to him, it's a rear sign and also it's, it's a rear sign. The person was not concerned at all.
Good. Thanks. So I think now we can do a vote by roll call on the, the motion as with the, with the one condition.
Right. And so by roll call, David?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Elizabeth?
Yes.
That's unanimous. That passes. Thank you. And
Thank you.
Thank you. It does look, I think it, I agree. I think we all agree. It's, it's, it looks like a nice improvement and for a, for a business that that really helps a lot of people in the, in the area. So the applicant can work with Nathan's office on next steps. I'm not sure we have to go into them now, if that's okay. Especially because we're, it's past 5:45. So we can proceed if everybody is comfortable to the matter that was set for hearing at 5:45 tonight. If it's now 5:54, which was a request for a finding to enclose a side porch and add a rear mudroom while staying within existing non-conforming setbacks submitted by Gregor Miles Tolson Wimmer at 27 Woodbine Ave, map ID 25A-156. This findings permit requires a simple majority vote, meaning two of the three members. It's a discretionary permit and the standard we need to apply in hearing this is to determine that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming conditions. And that is under and notice of this hearing was published on this matter. This application was published June 13th and June 20th, 2024. And
I think you're searching for 350-9.3A7.
Thank you. Yep, I found. Thank you. I know I'm seeing it now. Thank you very much. So yeah, the standard, this is, this, this application is governed by, as you've said, 350-9.3A7. So we can go ahead, I think.
Prior to that, David, I need to say that I received a postcard notifying me of as in a butter. In fact, I'm two and a half blocks away. I have no idea. I, and today I drove by to see how close it was. Had no idea where this house was. I do not consider it a problem, but if anybody wants me to recuse myself, I am happy to do so.
Well, yeah, a butter doesn't mean that your property, correct me if I'm wrong, Nathan, directly abuts the applicant's property. It's within a certain amount of feet, is it not, Nathan?
It's both. Yeah, we clarify this. So it's a butters, a butters, a butters and people directly across the street within 300 feet. But just because if you're multiple houses away from the property, that even if you're within 300 feet, doesn't mean you are a party of interest. So that was the our city software has some limitations. It's not smart enough to correctly pick out the obters by state law. That's why we send out a a broad notice to people within 300 feet. So just because you get a postcard doesn't mean it always is, it does, it's not guaranteed or sure guaranteed. It's not a guarantee that you are irrelevant or butter or butter or butters. And in this case, and I can share the, the accessories map to to clarify, but Sherry's house happened to be multiple houses over like
Carrie is not.
Yeah. Yeah. She's not a party. She's not a party of interest.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the clarification, because just today I thought this was so unusual and interesting because I knew it was two and a half blocks away. I mean, not even vaguely close. I actually drove from there to my son's house. It's not even my house. And it was 1,056 feet. I measured it. So, you know, maybe if there was a drone that went from one corner to one corner, you might get 300 feet, but otherwise, no.
Okay. So that means that Sherry, I think it means you are welcome to participate fully in this because you are not technically on a butter, even though you got a postcard. Good. So I will ask the applicant or their representative to just give us a brief overview of the request being made for and we'll go from there. And again, please, if you could give us your name and address for the record that's being kept.
Sure. My name's Gregor Tolson Wimmer and it's 27 Woodbine Avenue, Northampton, Massachusetts. And so we have a side porch that is currently the entrance that we use to the house that we would like to enclose. And you know, add on to is, well, yeah, we'd like to enclose and then we'd like to add a mudroom to the back of the house so that the main entrance is a little bit closer to our driveway. If you look at the site plan, we have to cross our entire yard to get to our entrance right now. So that's what we're hoping to do.
I guess I'll just ask if members have questions to start with.
So the reason this comes before us is because the current porch that you're now using as your entrance from your driveway is is closer to the adjacent lot than follows current code. So your remodeling of this and closing it in won't bring it any closer. It will not bring it any closer. Make it more enclosed. And although it looks closer than five feet to the line, it's, it's because you've got that private hedge, right?
Right.
Beyond that.
Yep. And Privet is quite wide.
Yeah, they get that way. And what I think I inferred after reviewing things is that you're not going to keep that others, that set of stairs from the porch. That's going to become a window. So that won't be another entrance way. So the foot traffic will move from that close to five foot line to further away.
Correct.
Okay. I got it right.
That was a great summary, Maureen.
That was, yeah, excellent. Thank
So there's, there's no additional non-conforming anything, right? It's just, it's going to be, yeah. So I, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I know because of the circumstances, you need to come before the zoning board, but doesn't seem to me that there's any problem. And Nathan, are there any comments by DPW or anybody or the city or anywhere else?
No, there were no comments from DPW.
And members of the public?
Is there anyone?
Has anybody written in?
Let me double check. I'm, my memory is a little fuzzy. Let me just, I'm sure that I've been getting so many public comments about another project. I'm getting a little bit. Yeah, there was, yes, there was a zero, zero public comment, not a single call, no letters about this particular project, no public comments.
And I assume you've talked to neighbors and they're all fine with it.
They are very fine with it. Yes.
Okay. Is there any, I'm going to ask now if there's any, if there are any members of the public present now who would like to comment or ask questions about this application? Are we seeing anyone, Nathan?
No, everybody else are applicants for and unless, I mean, I know Francisco was here for another hearing. Francisco, please raise your hand if you want to comment on this particular one. Go ahead and raise.
Public comments. I think the staff had a question to clarify, and that is how the location of the egress doors will change. Is, could the applicant address that question?
Yeah. Um, I mean, so currently the, the door that we use is facing our neighbor's property. And the new door will, so it's going to be a mudroom where you walk in, which is about the door that you walk in will be about midway on the back wall of the house. And then interior, on the interior side, the door will be at the far, like close to the far wall. So close to where the porch is now, but the traffic will be from the middle of the, going into the house at the middle of the back wall.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Helpful. So, okay. If, I guess I'll ask the board if, if we have no more questions for the applicant, we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And then after that, a motion on the request for the findings.
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay, yes, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we need a Okay, uh so we need a uh roll call vote, please, on the motion to close the public hearing on the Woodbine Avenue application.
Mm-hmm, by roll call, David?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, um so now um we can have discussion before or after if uh a motion, if we think it's necessary, but do we want to, does somebody wanna uh put uh a motion forward on the request for the finding?
I'm happy to do that, I approve, I move that we approve the uh application to enclose a side porch and a rear mudroom um by Greg Miles Tolson Wimmer at twenty-seven Woodbine Ave, MAP ID twenty-five A dash one fifty-six.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, um and just discussion, I'll point out that I I'll ask the board to confirm that I think we all agree that the proposed changes in our view will not substan- be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming conditions. Uh that is the standard we're required to apply and in approving the request, uh that is the find, that is the determination of the finding that we're making. Uh so i- is there any other discussion, or or should we just have a roll call vote on the motion as presented?
Yeah, I I would add the comment that the proposed changes will actually be s- less detrimental to the neighborhood.
Right, thank you, yeah. Good.
Um Maureen, would you, would you wanna like, you know, briefly list list out your rationale, I just for the minutes?
The um egress is further, is now, is now going to be further away from the all the five foot setback um and will now move to what is no, what is not non-conforming to a not, no, to a conforming setback which I consider an improvement.
Okay. Good, thank you. Uh so uh if we're ready, we can have a roll call vote on the motion.
Okay, by roll call, David?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's unanimous, um and again, I'll I'll let the, I'll direct the applicant to Nathan's office for further guidance on the process and procedures going forward um in terms of next steps um. Uh unless you have questions for us about that, but uh.
Right, I think I'm all set, thank you so much.
Good, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Take care, bye-bye.
Bye.
So um that brings us to the third item on the agenda, the one where I uh am not able to participate. So what I think I'll do is just turn off my camera and mute, but I'll I'll, I won't participate, but I'll hear you in the background, so once this uh matter is is resolved, um I'll come back for the remaining business of the board, the the minutes of meetings and the um uh determination of next hearing dates.
Sounds good, thanks, David.
I'm not thinking I'll hand the uh uh virtually to Elizabeth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so we have a hearing for uh ZBA finding permit to remove two non-conforming curb cuts and move one to a different location on the property uh by DC Coffee at five Fulton Ave, MAP ID thirty-nine A dash zero three zero. The hearing publication dates for this were uh June thirteenth and June twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, we are uh looking at a simple majority vote of two out of three members. And uh the standard for our determination is that the board needs to determine that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming conditions. Um and so I will hear from the applicants, but I I do wanna just say before we begin that uh we understand that this matter is also before the planning board and that there are several more complicated issues that they will be dealing with. We only have this one particular limited issue. And I think we need to make this determination before this this issue and others can go before the planning board. Um or at least this issue can go before the planning board, so if I could ask folks to limit their comments um and narratives to just the curb cut issue, uh we'd be grateful for that. Okay, so who is gonna be making the presentation for the applicant here? And if you could identify yourself and your address, yeah.
Sure, hi, I'm Alon Tierney, I'm president of Keen Riddle Architects in Amherst, and I'm joined by Rachel Laffler from Berkshire Design Group um right here in Northampton, we're just down the road from Town Hall, City Hall, um. We're representing Bruce Golez, the owner of the property, and I think he's just stepping into the conference room right now. Uh if it's okay, before we jump into the details, I just wanted to give you a little background on the project, or would you prefer to just focus on the curb cuts?
Uh sure, that's fine, I mean, I think you can assume that we've read the uh materials that you've presented and we have a general overview, but if you wanna take a couple moments to do that, that'd be fine.
Okay, great, um. So as I mentioned, I'm a Northampton resident, I was actually born here. Uh I came back to Northampton because it's a really special place. Um we have a great downtown filled with a variety of small shops, art galleries, restaurants, and performance venues. Uh it's why our town is a draw to visitors and um many of them come into town right off of ninety-one, uh Pleasant Street or Khan Street. Um and some of them stay at the hotels that are adjacent to this project. It's a very high traffic and very visible location, um and it's a gateway to our city. Another reason that I really love Northampton, um and I believe many of my fellow residents love it too, uh is the city's commitment to sustainability. Um as a community, we are always pushing to do what we can to be good citizens of this planet, to hopefully leave it in a better place than we found it, um but that's increasingly harder to do. And it seems like we can't do it fast enough. This project is uh Bruce's effort at trying to do his part um leaving the planet a better place by helping to make electric vehicle ownership a more viable option. Uh not only for the residents of Northampton, uh but also for the many visitors that come to Northampton and to those who may be making a trip between New York City and Vermont, and they need to get charged up. Uh in the US, as you may be aware, transportation accounts for about thirty percent of total greenhouse gas emissions. Electric vehicles or EVs are crucial component of the strategy to mitigate global warming. EVs reduce greenhouse gas emissions, increase energy efficiency, and improve urban air quality. The lack of comprehensive and accessible EV charging infrastructure is a significant barrier uh to the widespread adoption of electric vehicles. Addressing this issue requires coordinated efforts from the government, communities, and sometimes individuals. This will expand and enhance a charging network, making EV ownership more convenient and feasible for a broader range of consumers. So hopefully that introduction gives you some context about why this project is being proposed and why we believe that the project is in line with the city's commitment to sustainability and why this location is ideally suited for this project at one of our gateways to the city of Northampton, so. With that, I'll go into the details, um and we're just gonna share our screen. So. Can everyone see the screen?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah. Um so this is just the slide showing context, um the proposed property is in the center, it was the former Pleasant Journey used car shop, um and I believe, well, I bought a few cars there, I'm I'm guessing many people in Northampton did. Uh to the right of it is the Pro-Lube um auto maintenance um facility, and below that is the car wash and the sheriff's office. Just south of the property is the Florence uh Savings Bank um ATM, and across Khan Street are the two hotels. And then to the north of the property is uh is Neta. Uh just for some orientation. Um this is what the property uh used to look like when it was Pleasant Journey, you can see one of the curb cuts on to, well, actually, you can see both of the curb cuts onto Cotton Street. Uh the cars were parked right up very close to um, well, they were parked up to the property line, that strip of green is actually city property. And then on Khan Street, the cars were parked right up to the um the the property line and the sidewalk. So uh this is a a diagram, and you'll see a clearer diagram in a minute, just showing the four curb cuts uh two on Fulton Street and two on Khan Street. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Rachel.
Thanks, Alon. Um as Alon mentioned, um this is a mute, this is a survey that we had of the project when we started. To orient you now, the plans are rotated a little bit, um this is Pleasant Street on the top of the page. Um the car wash area is across the street. Neta is here, Fulton Ave is over here, this is Khan Street. The Florence Bank ATM is here, and the roundabout is down on this way. Um so today, so the site in its existing condition has four curb cuts. Um all of them are within within thirty feet of an intersection or another driveway, which is non-conforming. Um curb cut A and curb cut B have frontage onto Fulton Ave that are very close to the intersection. Um curb cut C is off of Pleasant Street and curb cut D is within within a li- little over twenty feet from the Florence Savings Parking Lot. Um so then in the proposed condition again, so this is Pleasant Street, Florence Bank ATM is over here, Neta is here, this is Khan's, this is Fulton's, this is other. We're gonna shrink curb cut D, make it conforming in size to be twenty-two feet in and width, um which helps us get a little bit further away from the Florence Bank uh area. And then we will be introducing a new curb cut E off of Khan Street and eliminating A and A, A, B, and C along this side. So this is an improvement over the existing conditions in that the the entry and egress from the parking lot is further away from the intersection of Fulton Ave and Khan's and Pleasant Streets. And then we are, we are within that fifty feet. We're asking for findings, we're within fifty feet of the Florence Bank parking entry and egress.
Which is why you still need our permission, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
That's why we're, that's why we're here today.
Great. That was very helpful, thank you. Um are there any other people who would like to speak on behalf of the proposed changes? I see that there were some other people here, so Nathan, is there anybody looking, I can't see if they're a hands up or not.
From this side?
I think Francisco's on the call, but he's private.
I I I'm talk, I'm first now talking about the presentation on behalf of the request for this change. Um, we we, if you're in opposition to it, we will be getting to you separately. Um, but Nathan, are there any more people who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah, now I don't see any hands raised, but uh I think Francisco, if you are, well, you want to make a public comment, there will be a chance later, but if you are here with the applicant to present this proposal, if you're part of the applicant party, you can speak now, um if you wanna raise your hand. And if you wanna make a public comment later, there will be a time for that, I just wanna clarify.
Uh Francisco is part of Keen Riddle, he's part of the design team, if you just have any, any further comments, this is the presentation.
Okay. Well, I'll I'll make, I didn't realize he was part of the Coon Riddle, I'll make him co-host then, um I thought he was here as a general member of the public, sorry, okay.
He's just listening to hear how it goes.
Okay. I I made him call us just in case.
Thank you.
Okay, so um are there any questions of the board to the applicant or the team?
Just a preliminary question on uh directional traffic, do you, do you consider is your proposal that both of these curb cuts, one being uh adjusted from an existing curb cut and one being a new curb cut onto a street that pri- prior to this did not have a curb cut, are you envisioning those both as two-way traffic?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, um we think, we think that traffic will sort of self-select also, um turning right or turning left. Um Pleasant Street does have the roundabout, and Khan Street does have the roundabout. Um and so anyone leaving the site, if they are finding that it's hard to make a left, they could take a right um using, using the roundabout to to get out. Um and the same, the same for Khan Street, someone could, if they were having a hard time making left, they could take a right and work, work their way around. We think it's important um to have two-way traffic on both sides. Um that allows for access to the EV charging station, EV EV charging stations, of which there are ten proposed right now. Um and I I think it would become, it could become a bit of a a challenge if it was a parking lot that was a a headed dead-end parking lot, um and if
Excuse me, can you clarify that of what parking lot?
So if if there was not a curb cut access, if this was not here, um it would be a dead-end parking lot, and that um if this were full, it would be more challenging to maneuver and navigate. If if this parking lot were full, you might have a lot of conflicts with cars getting in and out of the parking area.
So I, I do wanna clarify this further, because I have to be honest, the idea of two-way traffic going in and out of Pleasant Street, I don't know if you've had a traffic analysis or if that's part of this, but I can see a lot of accidents there. Um so I'm not saying that one should be a dead end, but couldn't you make it so you go in one side and out the other? I mean, so it's a one-way directional?
Does you?
Does that make sense to you? I I mean, the idea of people pulling out on Pleasant Street from that in both directions just seems like an accident waiting to happen to me.
I think part of uh my feeling about it was that um for people who live in Northampton, I think this becomes fairly logical in terms of getting in and out of if it was just one way. Um my concern would be if this is people coming from out of town, it could be really confusing in terms of how to access this, and I think in terms of the traffic patterns, um you know, that area is, it is busy, uh which helps in terms of the site, but it also has sort of the rush hour traffic of the morning and the uh late afternoon. And other than that, period, I I don't think it would be too problematic to have it going both ways.
Oh, then you don't live on that street like I do, then. Cause that would be prob, it will be problematic.
Right, one could use the same, I appreciate uh Rachel, your explanation, because I hadn't thought about the possibility of it actually assisting people if they can't make a left-hand turn coming out of coming onto Pleasant Street, that they might take a right-hand turn and go around the roundabout, should they, you know, think that way? Um but I'm curious if you have the dimension, the distance from both of those curb cuts to the roundabout itself.
Don't have a box hand, but I could um queue up a Google Earth for measurements?
I mean, I think they're in our materials, aren't they? I I believe they are. What, with the, with the remaining, the
Like how much of that little parcel of Florence Bank owns? You know, we're already cutting the fifty-feet limit uh by, you know, uh measurable distance, the fifty-feet maximum uh minimum requirement down to thirty in one place and twenty-something in one place, if I've got that right. So I am curious about how close, well, this helps, this helps.
So, I mean, one of the, one of the decisions that's been made is to remove the curb cuts from Fulton Ave. Um is that because? Um, is that because it's a uh, residential, quote residential street and the curb cuts were facing, um, residences? Is that some of the thinking about removing those?
No, the, the reason those are removed is because the building is um, facing Fulton Street and the length of it would not allow for a curb cut to safely go around the building.
I see, okay.
The proposed building, the building as proposed, I mean.
Right, right, correct.
Yep. Was there another question in there, Maureen?
Sherry asked, and I, I'm not sure this is the right place in our um, meeting protocol, but Sherry asked a question that I would pose back to Nathan uh, and/or the um, applicants about uh, traffics, traffic studies in relation to these proposed changes. Ken, um, since this is the state, the place where we ask questions to the applicants, do you have any traffic data or have you done any traffic impact sur- uh, studies on this?
Yes, we, we did a initial look at um, the ITE trip reports based upon use and change in use. Um, and one of the, one of the challenges of quantifying the proposed use of the project is that at this point in time, we do not have a tenant for the spaces. And the IT is tied towards what the tenant uses. So, for example, there's a difference between you have a cafe or if you have a sit-down restaurant with takeout, or if you have a sit-down restaurant. Um, currently, the project invigils two, two eating type spaces with a takeaway area in the middle. Um, and based upon, they're very different numbers for each of those. But when we look at the comparison of the traffic, um, traffic counts in, in North Pleasant, um, it is, is a couple orders of magnitude less. So the impact in terms of this project adding traffic to Pleasant Street and Con Street is negligible. But I understand that's not the question you're asking. Um, but in terms of that context, that this will have a small, very small um, impact on traffic on Pleasant and Con Streets.
Nathan?
I don't think, I'm sorry, I don't think I was asking about numbers of cars as much as the impact, just like that traffic circle was put in to mitigate the traffic situation in such a way that, you know, cars were less likely to be hit. Pedestrians, we have a lot of problems with pedestrians being hit. Um, has that been analyzed? What being able to pull out left and right on Pleasant Street is going to do? Not numbers of cars.
Can I, I'm, I'm curious, I have a, a question about other, the other adjacent properties and if those are also limited to right turn only or left turn only? Like the hotels and the.
We're not really considering that right now, so.
Plus, they're not on Pleasant Street.
Well, even if they were, that's not what we're looking at right now.
Yeah.
Right, and that's, that's easily obtained if you have that in, if you have an interest in knowing that. I know Florence Bank from Con Street, y- you can enter and exit, but onto Pleasant Street, you can't exit.
Right. One other question, and this is really for Nathan, I just wanna understand what we're working with here. Um, if all we're looking at is the curb cuts and they still haven't finished with the planning board, is it possible that we're voting on something that might be completely changed after the planning board?
Uh, possibly, um, that, that would not be the first time or a s- a significant amendment occurred because of applying more feedback or something has been continued. Um, I, every project is different. Um, I think, so right now, the uh, uh, zoning board is looking at the current proposed plan with these two curb cuts as indicated, um, if, and the planning board i- is, um, you know, planning board for them to approve this, uh, this curb cut change as proposed, they also need the zoning board findings permit, um, but of course, yeah. Even if you approve this particular curb cut proposal, if the, the very same curb proposal goes to the planning board and the planning board has some concerns or, or, you know, the applicant or the planning board, we, we, basically, if some amendment occurs that's different from this current proposal, um, yeah, that, that, yeah, um, that, that I wouldn't, I mean, every case is different, but that's not, that's, you know, that has happened in the past, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And procedurally, are there criteria the planning board will consider specific to the curb cuts that are different than what we would consider?
Yeah, I'd be, so normally curb cut, um, second curb cut approvals are under the jurisdiction of the planning board, either as a part of a special permit for standalone curb cut application or as an overall part of a site plan, um, application approval. And I mean, I can bring up their language about the second curb cut, um, but they actually have some specific language about that, uh, of course, so when the planning board is looking at approving the second curb cut, uh, they will be considering those criteria. If you give me one second, um. Yeah, so, so it's, it's under um, zoning ordinance eight point eight G. Um, the planning board may only issue a second curb cut if the applicant can show that there is something unique about the property that would otherwise render flow to and from the property unsafe and unmanageable. If the board finds that more than one curb cut is necessary for traffic safety purposes, then additional off-site traffic mitigation may be required by the planning board to address pedestrian safety within the abiding street network. Um, and in all other districts, the planning board may, as part of a site plan approval, allow additional driveway or curb cuts if and only if such permit will promote and improve tra- safe and efficient traffic circulation.
So they're, they're charged with looking at the traffic patterns in their determination of that. So I, I guess the question that I hear Maureen and Sherry raising is, does the zoning board need to make a determination before the planning board can get to that determination that you just referred to in the ordinance? Um, I, is that a prerequisite for the planning board to consider it?
Um, Elizabeth, sorry, uh, were you asking a question to me or to the board?
Yes, no, I wasn't asking a question of you. So I think what I heard Sherry and Maureen asking was whether the zoning board needed to make a determination before the zone, before the planning board would even get to this. Um, and I, I'm thinking that we probably do if we, you know, before they can look at traffic patterns, they need to know where the curb cuts will be. So, um, it seems to me that we may need to be making this determination, but I, I guess if you could clarify that, um, it would be helpful.
Right, um, and actually, um, I have, I'll reach out to Carolyn, um. Sorry, sorry, Elizabeth, could you erase your question again?
Sure, um, and Maureen and, and Sherry asked me, uh, uh, jump in if, if I'm representing this properly.
Yes.
I, the question is whether the zoning board needs to make a determination before the planning board can reach the determination with respect to the traffic patterns that you just indicated they will need to make a determination on under eight point eight G.
Uh, okay, understood, okay.
Or does, I, I'm, I'm not sure they're asking to put it off, but could the zoning board put it off if that was its determination and the planning board go forward and then come back to the zoning board for, once, once the planning board makes, makes a determination around traffic patterns, could it then come back to the zoning board for approval? You know, of the proposal? Or any altered proposal at that point?
Yeah, Sherry's question poses the idea, poses that thought of the order this is proceeding in. It, it doesn't feel quite purposeful.
Right, seems to me that we don't know if the plans will be altered after the planning board votes on this and.
Well, I, if I can interrupt, Sherry, I think that there's a different way of our looking at it as a board and that is not whether the curb cuts will, that give rise to different traffic patterns are, are purview, but whether the location of them, irrespective of whether it's one or two-way traffic coming out of them, but whether the location of the proposed ones as a, and the removal of the, of the two and then the shrinkage of the one and the other new one, whether separate and apart from.
Of them is.
Just the location, right, just the location, not the traffic paths going in and out of them. Because I think that from what Nathan just read, that's the purview of the, the planning board. And what we're looking at is just, there is a distance issue between, you know, the curb cuts and the intersections or the curb cuts and the businesses or the residential. So I think we're limited to just that and we're not giving permission either way or putting restrictions on either way. I don't think we would have the ability to do that, to give permission for which way the traffic would go. I think we could, you know, we, we could just be looking at where its placements are, where those placements are.
But our mission is to look at whether something is more detrimental or not. And it's, but detrimental, yeah, if the placement is detrimental and, I mean, you can't separate those things.
Um, yeah, I, I'm not sure. I mean, Nathan, what, what's your take on this, I guess is our question. Are we, what's our, what's our task here? What's our order? You know, are we looking at just the placement of these curb cuts without regard to traffic? And that's under the purview of the planning board, um, for them to decide? And are we asking to be, are we being asked to make this decision sort of in its vacuum? You know, just the, just those curb cuts or, you know, do we need to be looking at something more?
I think mainly it's the relative locations compared to the existing conditions. So the findings is you're looking at, you know, whether the proposed changes are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions. So, and, you know, so again, you know, um, yeah, so that, I mean, the traffic pattern substant- what does substantially more detrimental mean? I mean, even though the primary purview of this is in the planning board, zoning board can consider various factors. And I think, you know, um, some of the, some of the, you know, some of the points I raised in the, in the report or staff report, I, I'm, I'm under, maybe I sort of introduced confusion, but I think, you know, you wanna maybe, one way to look at is compare the location of the proposed changes to the existing change, existing conditions and see if it is more substantially more detrimental or not. And of course, you know, you can, you, you know, traffic safety is def- it could be a factor for you to make that determination, you know, and you can maybe, I think comparing it is one way to frame it. And, you know, you're not giving a blank applicant, a permit for any kind of curb cut plus anywhere. You are only permitting for this very specific, um, you know, this very specific location. And if, after this, if the planning board or if they, the applicant changes the location of the curb cut, my understanding is they will have to come back again for a, a, on, on another, another permit of this type if it still has this type of non-conformity.
So I'm, I'm reading the staff decision recommendation right here in front of us.
Right.
One is verify the rationale for having two curb cuts instead of just one. And number two is verify the traffic flow of the proposed curb cuts, i.e. two-directional or one-directional. That's a staff recommendation. And number three is verify that the proposed changes are safer than the existing conditions. That's what we've been tasked to do.
Right, and the second condition, second point, um, I, I was just more putting that as a factual check. You just wanna get a full view of how this is gonna work, operate. Um, and perhaps I might have said excessively, um, but, so, um, I think one way to mainly frame this is whether you wanna compare it, you know, you wanna do a comparison of this change, you know, do you, do you see this positional change as being more detrimental than the existing condition of the four curb cuts on that location? So, you know, rather than saying, in a blanket vacuum, saying, oh, these curb cuts are dangerous, you wanna make the comparison. Is it more detrimental or less detrimental or substantially more detrimental than uh, the current conditions?
So, thank you for that, Nathan. I do, um, I did note that you have inquired with the DPW and you have not heard back yet, correct?
Right, yeah, they, uh, it's still in open status. Let me just double check again, um.
And, and Pleasant Street being uh, Route Five, does the state also um, have a stake in this?
So, yeah, Route Five is state, um, I can't say the details about that aspect. But I, my understanding is, yeah, Route Five is state-owned and managed, so, um, there are some um, state, I guess, some state um, jurisdiction to that come into play, possibly.
Yeah, that affect our decisions today, right?
I mean, I do, I do, um, we're still at the phase where we're having a discussion in case we need to bring in the applicant to ask questions, correct? We haven't closed that part.
That's correct, and we haven't heard if there are any um, opposition comments either.
Okay, yeah.
So I would comment, and uh, actually, the applicant can comment on this, please. As far as I know, when Pleasant Auto, whatever it was called, uh, was there, the two curb cuts on Pleasant Street were not used at all. Is that correct?
Uh, I think, I think the one closest to Fulton Street was used.
Okay, but not the one that was closer to.
No, as you, as you can see, the cars are parked there.
Yeah.
I, I, it could be used if the cars weren't parked there.
Right, but they weren't, it wasn't, yeah.
And the two on Fulton Street were definitely used.
Yes, I, I realize that.
I don't believe I have any further questions for the applicants.
Do you, Sherry?
Well, I guess not, um, I guess not, no.
We'll have time for discussion, yeah, you know, later in the course of the hearing. All right, um. Applicant, are there any, is there anyone else who wanted to weigh in on this on your behalf? At this point? Okay, not hearing anything other. Is there anyone at this hearing who wanted to speak in opposition to this? Nathan?
Nobody, uh, please, um, there is nobody else in the hearing and there were no um, written comments at all for this project, either similar to many other applications, surprisingly, or maybe not surprisingly.
Okay, okay, um, so, if we don't have any more questions for the applicant, and I guess I just wanna double check that, or if there's nothing else the applicant wants to say, I, I think we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Right, does the applicant have anything further they'd like to say based on this prior stretch of discussion?
Um, I will say that we did consider um, traffic flow and uh, as Bruce mentioned, considering both people coming from the center of town and people coming off of ninety-one and giving folks options. Um, we felt was safer. Um, so that, that was our professional opinion.
Hmm, uh, actually, there is one question I do have for the applicant. I just wanna make sure, given that we're talking about this curb cut with the building behind, and, yeah, this is not a drive-through.
No, it is not, no.
Okay.
It's, so people would come and, and uh, charge their vehicles for anywhere from probably twenty to thirty minutes.
Thirty to sixty.
Thirty to sixty minutes, so the idea. Thirty to sixty minutes. So the idea is that the commercial space is a place where. They can grab a cup of coffee or pizza or whatever. Um, so, yeah, cars would be parked there for. A period of time, but also allowing for people who may not be charging their cars to come and visit the commercial spaces as well. And we did make it very pedestrian friendly so that uh people from the hotels. Uh, could use the crosswalks and come uh to the commercial spaces and and clear separation between. Vehicles and pedestrians was really important.
So back to the, um, and I understand your conundrum about not feeling like you can have. Can develop numbers for traffic without knowing uh the specifics about the occupants of those of the space. But even if you had developed data based on the charger stations, the anticipated, you know. Uh, optimal use of charger stations, that's really who that business, that building is aimed for. There's only nine other spots for. Other traffic. So, I mean, I feel like that that data would be meaningful. Would have been meaningful to bring in even based on the um expectation of. Average or um intended, like anticipated use of the chargers because, I mean, I think it's a great concept. What you're proposing is a great concept, but the it it seems to me based on. The charging stations and that. Getting that data would would hat would provide meaningful information about what the impact of. Uh, traffic would be at those two.
But that's, I I I think that that's understandable, but unfortunately, there are very limited, um. I don't think that there's information yet available for that. I think Rachel's team did try to look for that. And it's because it's such a new uh thing, there aren't many. Stations like this, which is part of why we're trying to do this.
Yeah, it's not yet, it's not yet quantified in the I T E manual for for conditions, so everything that we would be doing would be based upon.
If I could uh speak to that, um, I've been working with the charging company because that's a concern of mine that. You know, for this to work, the chargers need to generate some revenue. And they gave me a spreadsheet based on usage, so if there's. Ten chargers, they predict the first year, the usage would be about four percent. So I don't know in terms of the math of how many times that is. I actually hope for more than that, but over a period of. Um, eight to ten years, they ramped up the charger usage to eighteen percent. So it's not like this is, you know, hopefully this will encourage the more E B purchases. Um, but for now, the usage is pretty low. If you drive by the. Uh, Tesla supercharger station over in Hadley and it's rare that there's very many cars there, so I don't think. This is gonna be a heavy use, certainly in the first few years. And the fact that, you know, you do have to be there for thirty to sixty minutes, it's not the same as going to a gas station and filling up in five minutes.
I I do, this is completely separate, but I wanna give you kudos for doing this because um. I just recently bought a new car and refused to buy an electric car because I said there aren't enough charging stations yet in. In uh New England, so um I give you kudos for trying to do this.
Well, thank you. Been quite the endeavor.
And I mean, one thing is, um, this is not a major site plan project, so it didn't require as detailed of a trip. Um, data as required for major site plan project. Um, so, um. I I know this is a unique uh project with these different um complex complexities, but yeah, um. That's that's one, one detail about the the application process.
And we did go through a long process of trying different scenarios in terms of locating the. Building, locating where the chargers went and after several variations. This came down to making the most sense in terms of being able to utilize a really tight site.
Okay, um, thank you for that. Were there any other?
I I do have one question, and I think it's probably not in our purview. Um, but I do wanna at least ask it of the applicant. Um, since their idea is that it would, based on traffic flow would be easier, let's say, when you're on Pleasant Street. To make a right turn and go around the rotary, would it be possible to just put up a sign saying right turn only? I mean, I don't think that's our purview in terms of looking at where the curb cuts would be, but it would certainly make me feel much more comfortable. If that's the kind of thing you were willing to do.
Well, if it's an anchor or break it, I guess yes, but uh. You know, I certainly don't want to discourage anybody or make it problematic for anybody to find it.
Yeah, I I just personally know because I get off on what I still call exit eighteen, because it'll never be any different to me. Um, uh, and I drive up and down that road probably five times a day. And I I have almost hit pedestrians a number of times when they step out from the Shell Station or the Sheriff Station or the. Or where the car wash is. I know that is a difficult area in terms of uh traffic. Um, and I just kind of worry that one more crossing that street with cars that aren't paying attention. Uh, is just more trouble, that's all.
Well, where those crosswalks are, it's almost more problematic with people taking a right turn because.
It is problematic, yeah.
If they're speeding up in order to get ahead of a car, I mean, the crosswalks are in a terrible place unless they have some other.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you. That's a whole nother topic, yeah.
We're not solving that in this meeting.
Right, okay, any other questions? All right, um, motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Hey, and by by roll call, uh, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Okay, um, how about we make a motion? We, it can be amended if we need to and then have discussion. Let's start with the motion.
Um, can you explain that order, Elizabeth? Because I I I'm not sure what I would move.
Okay, well, then I was just gonna say, thank you, if if that's too um uncertain right now, then I think that we could. Uh, have some discussion and then make a motion.
One of my considerations is moved to. Um. A hold on this decision until we hear from the DPW. I'm very concerned about making decisions without full, uh, without. That information.
Nathan, do you think we will hear from the DPW or is it possible that their silence is, they they just don't intend to file any comments?
Um, i- i- it's a large, it's a, I mean, even though it's intermediate side plan project, it's still a significant project and. Chances are that Carolyn might have a DPW feedback that she received that I didn't receive. So right now, in the Open God permit system. There is a DPW review step that's still that's marked as in progress, so, um, I mean, if that is. The if the board wants to hold off on making this decision, um, until DPW clarifies, um. I um, I I think, you know, actually, a couple of weeks ago, there was a similar issue, or not a similar issue, but there was another problem, a much larger project. Where DPW still hasn't offered a stormwater permit yet, so that project site plan hearing was continued to another month. So if if the board feels more comfortable, um, having DPW's opinion about this proposed change, um. Yes, I I I mean, um, I I, you know, so I I guess we will need, I'll need to, I'll, you know, notify the planning board that. Um, you know, the board, the zoning board feels more comfortable approving this, um, and actually, um, the applicant has their hand up.
Can we take input from the applicant at this point?
Oh, right, we have closed, did they close the public hearing?
We have closed the public hearing, yes, so.
So let's let's see this part through. I guess my feeling is, um. I'm leaning more towards strong concern about the Con Street curb cut. And hearing from the DPW could resolve that, you know, I I that's, I guess. That's where I'm leaning right now. As much as I'm in support of so much about this proposed project. That's not our, that's not in our purview. It's not about that.
Can you explain why you're concerned about the Con Street?
Why? Because there are so many curb cuts in such a short span of time and soon to be another one when, well, not soon. But when what used to be the Gazette becomes another hotel, there's going to be a lot of additional. In and out traffic approaching the roundabout from that direction, from Con Street. In addition to now one more, one more, um, hopefully very successful business coming from their Pleasant Street side. So I'm uh, I'm concerned about that. There has not been a cu- a curb cut on the Con Street stretch. This is new. And the Fulton uh Avenue entrances were just kind of sleepier, right? I mean, they weren't, people were not coming in and out of a major road, so.
Um, what does this, if we were to postpone this, Nathan, is there a planning board meeting scheduled for this? And what is, what would a postponement here do to that meeting?
Uh, um.
Right.
Me, actually, me, if, um, would you, can I, um, contact director? My understanding is. So the hearing is scheduled for the planning board tonight at eight fifteen, so their approval of the plan as presented, including that. Um, curve cut change is dependent on the Z V A's permit as well. Both are required, basically, the, you know, so. Um, I think. I I, you know, I guess the planning board can consider various other aspects of the of the, um, of the proposal. This this coming, uh, uh, coming at A A A fifteen P M, but um, I think for them to approve it actually. To finally approve it, and if we decide to postpone it, they will have to subsequently postpone or continue their hearing. Um, let me, let me, uh, um, is it okay if I mute and call?
Why don't we just take a five-minute break and let you do that, okay?
Yeah, let's do that, yeah, thank you.
Would Nate have been C C'd on the memo?
No, I just wanted to carry on.
Chris Baker is the DPW, right, the city engineer, so they gave us comments today.
Hi.
Tried calling Carolyn, but went to voicemail, so I texted her.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, their hearing is, the planning board hearing is starting at seven.
And Sherry?
Yeah.
Are we back in meeting, Elizabeth?
Um, I thought we were waiting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Do you expect to hear from Carolyn or not?
Um, maybe let's give it a couple more minutes, um, I think she might be just busy with the setting up the other hearing, um. And, you know, I think our five-minute break is still up, is still there, still in place, so. Yeah, maybe just a couple more minutes. Actually, I I just heard back from Carolyn. Oh, and. I guess we're on break still.
I think it's been five minutes, so I think we can go forward.
Let's wait till we've got Sherry back.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hang on one second. Sorry, I just got out my ice cream. I had to.
It's dinner time, yeah.
So I I think maybe to everyone's relief, uh. So, yeah, DPW, uh, according to Carolyn, um, decision uh from her text, DPW is fine with it. I have comments from them for planning board. I think, uh, it's just communication. It wasn't fully uploaded to the permit. Uh, process and I'm asked, I asked her if she could email it to me, I mean, um, but. Yeah, from her communication, DPW is fine with the proposed curb cut changes.
All right, I think that's useful.
Okay. And and Sherry, to more um specifically answer your good question. Um, my concerns about the Con Street as opposed to the Pleasant Street curb cuts are twofold. One is that. It's a new curb cut, whereas the Pleasant Street one exists, and it is, um. Not even thirty feet from the Florence Bank entrance and. So and it's Florence Bank's only entrance, they can't, um, well, how's it work? No, it's two-way on that side. So on the Pleasant Street side, they can't exit there, but on that side, it's two-way and it's in our, um, you know, code is fifty feet. So that's, that's quite close. So I guess those are, those were the two factors that posed that curb cut as. Uh, to me in a different, um, different level of concern than the Pleasant Street curb. Different level of concern than the Pleasant Street curb cut, which they've actually improved on. It's now further from. It now will be further from the Florence Bank entrance.
Yeah, I just know that the Pleasant Street curb cut wasn't used, so even though it's further, you know, it wasn't used at all before. And now it's gonna be used, so. Um that being said, this is a very odd piece of property and they packed a lot in here and. You know.
And and I guess I would just add that I I I put a lot of stake in DPW and and the planning board. And so I feel comfortable going ahead with the this proposal. Um because, one, it's getting rid of, it's reducing the number of curb cuts from four to two. Which I think is a is a huge improvement. One of the remaining ones is going to be much smaller. Um and so the only one that, you know, is going to be the new one is the Con Street. And if, you know, I hear all the, you know, your concerns over there um. I I have to say, you know, I've go in and out of Con Street a lot, and I go in and out of Pleasant Street from, you know, I cut through Wright Ave. And, you know, it makes, and there's that uh bank ATM thing. It it takes a couple of minutes sometimes, but I I don't have a problem. I've never had a problem getting out eventually, so. I I guess I just put a lot of stake in DPW, and if they're okay with this. And given that the planning board is going to be looking at traffic flow and patterns of these curb cuts, uh you know, and that we're. I I understand, and you were right, Sherry, what our, you know, charge was. But I'm I'm feeling comfortable looking at this from DPW's perspective. And the deep, and the planning board having a lot to come behind us. This is just a very preliminary kind of decision, which doesn't mean it's not important. But it is preliminary to so many other pieces that they're also going to be looking at, including the traffic flow, so. Um you know, for my my two cents, I I'm feeling comfortable with this change. And I and I do think it meets the standard of being less detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, and so despite my concerns about the traffic flow, um you know, based on our standard, which is less detrimental. The neighborhood, I definitely think this is an improvement. And uh and so, you know, although I do have concerns, you know, that's. Outside of, in my opinion, kind of my purview, and uh this is clearly an improvement. I I think it's less detrimental, and I would agree with you on it.
I guess the other thing that I might add in terms of less detrimental is, you know, looking at the project as a whole. You know, we have some use of land that has remained unused for a long time, so I think that's a boon also.
Well, the Pleasant uh Auto just sold last year, I think. Maybe my years have all blended together, but you know. Yeah, I think it was fairly recent.
Uh I kind of feel like it was longer than that, but whatever, it's still stagnant now. And to have something that could be put to use there, that is going to be worthwhile and and have, having an E V myself. I think it's a great thing to have. Yeah, so um so. Um Maureen, did you want to say anything else, or can we proceed with a motion, do you think?
I think we can proceed with a motion. All I would say is um to, you know, to remind ourselves, we're not voting on. Um our approval of the project. We're voting specifically on the curb cuts. And and I think I will weigh in as well to say how much I applaud this this venture. To make something really positive out of a very odd, tiny, tight little space. Um but that that's not what we're here to review, so that's all. And it's not that um. We're also here not to vote to say that it's less detrimental. It's it's, will it be more detrimental to the neighborhood? So I think we need to keep those parameters in mind.
Yeah, there is a difference distinction. That's true. All right, motion.
I don't know how to say it, so I'll let one of you do it.
Okay, so that means me?
Yeah.
Um so uh I move that we vote to. Uh approve a ZB A findings permit to remove two non-conforming curb cuts and move one to a different location. On the property by D C Coffee at five Fulton Ave, map ID thirty nine A dash zero three zero. Uh discretionary permit, simple majority vote required, two of three members. The board needs to determine that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming conditions. Uh what else do we need? The applicable code sections?
No, I think we're good.
Thanks.
I think we're good. Yeah, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion before a roll call? Okay, uh Nathan, could you do a roll call?
Yes, by roll call, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Uh Maureen?
No.
Okay, no. And Sherry?
Yes.
Okay. So two out of three.
So good luck with this project tonight and the planning board. And uh I think that will wrap up that hearing. We do have some minutes to consider and then some scheduling. But congratulations and good luck tonight.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Okay.
Good luck with the project.
I'm I'm back.
Okay. Oh, yes, take it, take it away, David. I never want your job again.
I was gonna say, you're welcome to wrap this up and I'll just, um, okay, so I, well, I think the only things left are. Uh two sets of minutes to approve. Maybe we can vote on those together. And then just to figure out what the summer schedule is going to be. So the minutes, do people, do people have a chance to look at the minutes?
I did, yeah.
I was not present for the one that Sarah and Sherry were at, but I I still moved to accept both of them.
Yeah, I was only present at one of them and it was seemed accurate.
Okay, so do we have a motion to just approve both sets of minutes? I think we can do it all in one motion.
Yes, motion to approve both sets of minutes.
A second?
Second.
Okay, uh roll call vote please.
Yes, by roll call, David?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
So that's unanimous? Those are approved.
So what happens just procedurally, um Sherry was the only one here able to attend that. So can, does she vote on those minutes?
No, I don't think it's, I don't think you have to have been at the meeting to approve the minutes. As long as no one of us has objections to the minutes, including the people who were there. Does that seem right, Nathan?
Yeah, I will double check, but you don't have to be present to approve minutes necessarily.
And since we have somebody here who was here at at least one of each of those, that person, you know, where. Hasn't objected, right?
Right, right, thank you.
I think that makes sense. I'm kind of making that up.
And we were given the minutes in enough advance that we could have let Nathan know if we had any amendments to it or proposed changes.
Right.
And and if in fact that isn't correct and Carolyn says yes, because I was there, I approve it, so.
I approve this message.
Great. Um and then the last thing I think is just, uh we, it sounds like. We'd uh of of the possible summer dates, um and Nathan, you'll confirm, we're talking about July and August. We only, we never had four people. We only have three people in the survey available for each of the dates. Is that, was that the issue, Nathan?
So yeah, we had three out of four members for every one of those four dates. Let me open it up in our screen share, so we are clear.
Now, there were four people available on July eleventh, it looks like.
Oh, oh, actually, uh so one of the, there's five people listed, one of them is me. Sorry, I I created a doodle poll. So ignore the top person, ignore the top person, that's me. Let me just, let me share my, yeah, so. This is actually, you you know, this is the view as me having created the doodle poll, so it might look a little bit different. But yeah, if you see it, one thing to consider is we do have an um, we do have an application that arrived relatively recently. So they cannot be on the July eleventh hearing. They have to be on July twenty fifth or later. It's another, it's actually, it's actually a special permit hearing. For um converting a carport that's non-conforming into a living area. Because carports and garages are allowed to have a much narrower setbacks, or five feet less narrower setbacks than standard living space. Right now, it was non-conforming at a lesser degree, but if they're converting to living area, it becomes more. Uh it becomes a new zoning violation and they need to get a special permit with unanimous votes. So the, it can only happen July twenty fifth or later. So, you know, I guess the best one factor for the board to consider, and there might be a special permit for us business. They called me to say they're writing the application, but they haven't submitted anything, but that might come down sometime later. But right now, the one, there's one special permit hearing that can happen on July twenty fifth or later.
I'd like to wait until August if we can on that.
Um yeah, I'm I'm out of out of state the twenty fifth. When we get to August, I'm going to look at my calendar again, because I have a feeling. I might be available the twenty second of August. I I thought, I'm gonna look right now, but let's do July.
If you, if you are, yeah, I'd just assume wait for you, David, if, for when you can be there.
Okay, but.
Run these meetings.
But the eleven will only have three people, is that of July? Sounds like that's a problem.
Well, no, it just won't be um uh not enough advance notice, right?
Yeah, so July eleven, yeah, July eleven cannot happen, not enough advance notice. But July twenty, July twenty fifteen later, we have enough, uh no, no, we have enough time for notice. But on July twenty fifth, uh David is missing, and on August eighth, Maureen is missing. And actually, on August twenty second, uh two members, David and Sherry are missing, so.
David's saying he might be able to.
Yeah, I I'm trying to remember why.
Because for me, in August, the twenty second would probably be better than the eighth, but I I I could do that. But um Nathan, is there anything in other than that that we'd hear on July eleventh?
Uh there's, there's no need to meet on July eleventh.
Okay, so let's, let's just kill July eleventh and then look at.
So I I could potentially be available on the eighth. I would have to zoom in from somewhere else.
Um well, we we do have the three of us already, Maureen, so.
Okay.
When you're on vacation, you're on, you should be on vacation.
Oh, quasi-vacation on.
Oh, okay.
For a niece and nephew.
We're talking about August now?
Yes.
So David, what's?
Yeah, August, I think August twenty second. Can't remember why I said I couldn't make it. I thought maybe I was going to be visiting my daughter in London. But I think she's going to be in Switzerland, so maybe that's why. Um I think.
Why don't we put that a little bit on hold and do it by email? And you can double check that. But as far as I'm concerned, if we could do the twenty second as opposed to the eighth, that would probably be a little bit better, but I could do either. And if you're only available on the eighth, then I think we should go on the eighth, David.
Um. Yeah, the twenty second is, because I have something else on the eighth. Um I think the twenty second. My schedule, I usually keep it really up to date and I, and I'm looking at it. I don't remember why I said I couldn't. Except unless it was that, that I thought I was going to see my daughter in the end of August, but that's not happening. Um so I, uh we can confirm this by email.
Right, yes.
I'm quite sure I can do it August twenty second. So are we talking about combining? Doing the July one on August twenty second? Is that part of what we're saying here? Plus, anything else that comes up?
I I think that's right, yeah. Right, Nathan?
Uh well, actually, I I I I need your clarification. So do you not want to do anything on July twenty fifth either, like?
I I'm definitely not available. I never was on July twenty fifth. I'm going to be out of state and I won't be able to even get on a call or Zoom.
So I just assume wait.
Okay, yeah, so I I I guess the thing, you know, the thing to consider, yeah, so. Um the current special permit application that's uh that's been submitted, they need three, three members, so.
Oh, you only need three?
Yeah, for special permit, you need three members. Yeah. Oh, was there? Yeah, three, three members is considered a full quorum, and you you know, associate, full, regular member, doesn't matter. But as long as you can have a quorum of three members, you can, you can have three votes needed for the special permit. So, uh you know, from the applicant's perspective, obviously, because I think they they submit, let me, let me stop sharing for a moment and. Let me see, and there is a timeline or deadline to have a hearing soon, have a hearing within, is it sixty five? Sixty five, sixty five days. Uh let me, give me one second. Let me just see when they submitted it.
Um. What's wrong with August eight? I don't understand.
I think what Nathan is saying is, we may, we need to have a hearing with the three available people, July twenty fifth.
Yeah, so David, you you know, you marked yourself as not being available on July twenty fifth, but well, the other three members said they're available, so. Um sorry, give me one second. Why am I not? Forty nine, forty nine, yep, there you go. Yeah, so this person submitted their application on June seventeenth, about ten days ago.
So waiting till August twenty second might be too late.
Right, you you know, especially for for the applicant, um um. Of course, you know, I I understand the board has limited availability.
Um we could hold it on the twenty fifth.
So yeah, if, yeah, so um if, so let me confirm then, are the vol, is the board available on July twenty fifth?
Well, I think Sherry, Maureen and Elizabeth are available. I am not.
I am, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um yeah, and so that'll work. It's just that um, because it's exactly three. If one of you, um one of you be asked to, you know, one of you are are not available. And actually, let me tell you the, I mean, it's already in the public folder, so the address for that is forty nine Man Terrace. So if you have a potential conflict of interest, uh just starting, you know, forty nine, four nine man or.
I might have a conflict of interest.
You you think you might?
Well, as I could be in a butter, I don't know where forty nine is, but my house backs on to Man Terrace.
Oh, okay, okay, let me uh, um, well.
But if we, if we move it to August eighth, which I can't do, but David can. That would still be within that window, that that sixty days window.
Right, right, sixty five or so, yeah, um August eighth. And uh, yeah, and these kind of coordinations, so yeah, August eight could work, yes, if um. Yeah, yeah, I I guess, um I I actually don't know your address, Maureen, so I mean, I can look at it obviously, but I don't know your exact address. So I actually don't know how close you are to forty nine Man Terrace.
Me either, it depends where the number starts, but I'm at one ninety seven Nona Tuck if you want to look, but.
I'm I'm looking right now. Hold on.
Right, thank you.
Let's see. One ninety seven.
And Nathan, do you have the name of the owners in case?
Oh, yes, the owner, yeah, give me a second, um.
It is quite a ways in terms of um between Man Terrace, that's the one, two, three, four, five, six. Looks like the seventh or eighth house down from the corner of Maple and Pine.
Yeah, so I should be, I would be fine then.
Yeah. Yeah, and you're right, it looks like the first house on Nona Tuck, next to Maple, is that right?
Yeah, you're 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 several houses over, you're you're, yeah, you're away, yeah, you're you're in the neighborhood, but you're definitely far enough. Um, yeah, so, yeah, I think that's not a concern. I'll just double check the distance. Yeah, you you're actually, I mean, just drawing a straight line roughly, you're you're more than four hundred feet away.
Yeah, my um, my ha, my property is, has a wedge that goes all the way up to Man Terrace. So I come up as in a butter.
Oh, oh.
For properties there, yeah.
Yeah, but even if I draw a line from like.
Oh, yeah, I I think I'm fine, but.
Yeah, you're fine.
It's not, it's nothing that would rule me out, that's all I'm saying.
Right, great. Yeah, so um I mean, you know, um guess, yeah, we just want to clarify. Whether you want to meet on July twenty fifth for the hearing and the August eighth or twenty, choosing between one of the two days in August. You know, you can um, you you can decide on the later if you need some more clarity about your schedule. And of course, you can decide here and. And of course, you can decide here and or just later, so, but, yeah, just to reiterate, how I can mark down July twenty-fifth as the July day for the ZBA. And the August date, you can either decide now or decide later once everybody's more clear on their schedule.
Are you able to tell us the name of the possible new board member, or is that not?
Oh, oh, sorry, oh, yeah, we don't know yet. I actually just emailed the mayor's office. I I don't, I, I, sorry, I don't have the information now, but I haven't heard any big, anything yet, but doesn't mean it's not being processed. I just have.
So there could be a new board member July twenty-fifth as well, although brand new, so.
Right, right, but it's kind of, you know, for for city operations, a one-month turnaround from now to, well, it might happen, yes, it might happen, yes, yes, I just don't have the information right now, apologize.
I have a feeling I'm, I might, I might need to get sworn in again. I had some correspondence from the mayor's office.
Okay.
Have to dig it out, but I have a feeling I'm supposed to get sworn in again. Okay, I don't, I don't know if you have that information, but so, so I think we're saying the next meeting will be July twenty-fifth and the August date is to be determined and we'll, because we have some more time to figure that out.
So, so August TBD, and David, I'll look into the, into swearing in, but basically you have to sign a, I think, swearing in statement at the city clerk's office. Pretty, pretty quick process.
Yeah, no, I I can run over there and soon as we confirm that what I need to do. Okay, any, anything else?
There were two, there was one agenda item that I would be happy to hold on, that you had put in there, Nathan, to review the letter we received.
Yeah, I will literally.
I have not gone back to that.
Yeah, I will literally say in two sentences, you don't need to worry about it. The letter was meant for the planning board about them not allowing people to publicly speak over Zoom, but it doesn't apply to us, so there was some misunderstanding and I clarified it with the person who wrote the letter. She asked it to be sent to the zoning board as well, thinking zoning board operates in the same way as the planning board.
Right, but we've always let people speak, for sure.
Yes, exactly.
And have recorded everything.
Right.
And, okay, so I think maybe we can have a motion.
I have one other point, is that, have I officially become a full member? Like, I got an email that said that I was being recommended to become a full member and I don't, I don't want to weigh in there, because it's possible that this new person who comes on board might be, you know, might have more expertise and might be a better full rather than alternate member, but I don't, I don't know my status.
I don't think we've ever brought in somebody new as a full member, if only because it, as we all know, it takes time to sort of learn the ropes, no matter what their expertise is, but that's my two cents.
Yeah, I think it it's just sort of administrative delays, but I think, Maureen, yeah, my understanding is you will be, you are already, or you are gonna be, become a full regular member, so. It's just kind of rotating basis, so, well, as members resign, associate members become regular members. So I will double check that too with the mayor's office.
I'm a rising member.
Has everybody taken the, the required open meeting information, training? Because none of us want to have our name in the newspaper that we didn't do it, that's, so I'm just reminding people to maybe check on that.
I appreciate that I get notified if if there's any question on it and I have taken it, my, you know, both times I've renewed my whatever status.
So if anyone does have a question, check with either Nathan or the, I think it's the city clerk's office.
Right there.
Submit the certificate to when you finish the little online course.
Yeah, there's going to be open meetings and also conflict of interest.
Right.
And that, so.
Is that all done at the same session, because, or is that two different trainings?
I think it's two different trainings on the same portal, they're trying to unify. Yeah, so, but it'll be two separate, I mean, within one place, I think.
I'm familiar with the conflict of interest, but not the open meeting, that doesn't sound.
Maybe, maybe I, maybe I.
Yeah.
It's conflict of interest, yeah.
I honestly, I'm not sure, Nathan, whether I've done that or not, so could you send me the information again?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, is it possible, Nathan, somehow to coordinate with the city clerk to confirm if any of us need to be doing something that we're not aware of? Because they do sort of fly under the radar sometimes, but they are required. In fact, I know, I I think I did conflict of interest. I'm not sure I remember open meeting unless it was on at the same time. It wasn't that long ago that I did it.
Yeah, they have some different renewal period requirements, I, so I will, yeah, I'll double check that for everyone, so. The the city clerk.
Make sure you're in good stead.
Yeah, just, you just don't, that would look, that would be awkward if we just, and it doesn't take that much time to to finish it, because you just have to carve out a bit of time, but but now I'm wondering if I, I have one missing, if, so, well, it'd be really good if we could just all make, if Nathan, you could coordinate with the city clerk's, I think it's the city clerk's office to make sure we've done all that.
That's correct.
And if anyone's missing anything, maybe you could get us the links or whatever we each need to finish up anything, any of us need to finish up.
Well, the problem happened is the city clerk will send you, like automated link. You'll get an email from the city clerk saying, please take these.
So they, they like calendar it, they make sure to reach out to us? Because I know that happened with me with the conflict of interest thing, so I took care of it.
I think it's a little bit different for each city, but typically the city clerk actually has some kind of either a state level unify system or like a city level system that keeps track of those, those elements, open meetings and the conflict of interest. And maybe confusing with the state department, but somebody actually, somewhere, somewhere, either city or at the state level, somebody actually keeps track. Sometimes they're not always prompt with notifying everybody who needs to be notified, but at least I think they have it on file.
So I'm looking at the website, city website, and looking at the members on our board. And David, you and I, our term expires June twenty-four.
Yeah, that must be what I heard from the mayor's office.
I have, I I don't, I have not heard, except for some notice saying that they were planning and sustainability was recommending that I become a full member. So that was separate, so.
I I need to run, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go, but send us emails on this, yeah, and.
So we'll just do a real, I guess the other three of us can do the motion to adjourn, why don't we let you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we can, you can, I think you can go and the three of us can do the motion to adjourn. Anyway, I think we've covered everything, so if you need to run, bye-bye, Elizabeth.
Thank you very much, see you guys later.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
So where, I got something from the mayor's office, I was, the time I was swamped. But we don't have to do it now, so, so Nathan's gonna look into it on his end and for me, I'm gonna see if I can find this, the email from the mayor's office asking. Oh, yeah, it's come to my attention.
And I truly don't think I've done this, I don't remember getting anything like.
Yeah, you would know if you did it, you have to take this online course, it takes an hour or two, I mean, it's, it's not fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I'm sure I didn't do it, so I need to know about it.
So when you went to City Hall to get sworn in, Sherry? That's when they gave me, you know, like the, you have to do this, you have to do this, you have to do this, and they.
I don't, I don't remember anybody telling me anything like that. It's possible, but, you know, I got a busy life, but, but I don't, I honestly don't remember that.
Well, well, David and I are probably due to refamiliarize ourselves with it.
Yeah, sounds like we all need to do it.
Yeah, and so I'll, I'll check, I'll do, I'll do some checks.
Sounds good, Nathan.
And and I'm filling out right now this, I guess I have to fill out an application to be reappointed, I'll get that in right, right now, by the end of the night. But but I guess, is there anything else, or should we, can we adjourn, any other questions? Nothing, okay, so I guess just, motion to adjourn, please, then?
Okay.
I'll, I'll move to adjourn our meeting.
Okay, second, and just roll call, please, Nathan?
By roll call, David?
Uh, yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And Sherry?
Yes.
Good, so we're adjourned, thank you, everybody.